Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Good morning. Supervisors Serna-
Here.
Desmond Frost-
Here.
Hume-
Eric Kennedy-
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on KUBU Radio 96.5 FM. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 11th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file a speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
Public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda, and we do have eight requests. I'm going to bring them up. Our first speaker is Tammy.
I am here with New California State, and as an American citizen, as a California resident, and a part of We the People, each one of those is super important to me. And I wanted to ask for today, if I understand it right, we get only once every two weeks that we can speak as a public comment, and it's a 30-minute limit, and then only two minutes per person. So in that time, would you look while we are sharing? It's the way I was raised, to show respect when somebody is communicating something to me, that I look. And I know that's no guarantee that someone's listening, but it's an indication that there's some connection that we have. So that's my request for today, that you all would look as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Pardon me. Good morning. I'm Sarah Matson, New California State, and on October 2nd, this letter was hand-delivered to the Board of Supervisors, the Registrar of Voters, and the Sacramento County Council. Cease and desist. The state of California has passed AB 969 enacted on October of 2023. Using the Urgency Clause, this bill states, "This bill would declare that it is to take effect immediately as an urgency statute." Section 2 of the bill states, "This act is an urgency statute necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety within the meaning of Article 4 of the California Constitution and shall go into immediate effect." The facts constituting the necessity are, "In order to ensure that county elections officials know what voting systems they will be using, particularly with the upcoming 2024 March presidential primary, it is necessary for this act to take effect immediately." The California Constitution, Article 4, Section 8D states, "In pertinent part, urgency statutes are those necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety. A statement of facts constituting the necessity shall be set forth in one section of the bill. Section 2 fails to state any facts supporting the assertion of a threat to the public peace, health, or safety. In this Assembly Bill, there is no fact stating either that any election official was unaware of what wrong voting systems they should would be using, nor any facts amounting to an urgency within the meaning of the California Constitution, Article 4. Additionally, voting by citizens that that is accurately counted does not impact public health or safety. Thus, there is absolutely no logical, legal, or constitutional basis for the alleged urgency." I yield.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Perry Ferrucci. I will continue the reading. Therefore, the use of the Urgency Clause to bypass normal legislative processes was and is unlawful and deprived the citizens of California of an opportunity for public referendum. Misusing this Urgency Clause to avoid check on legislation and prevent public input is an abuse of legislative authority. It prevents the citizens from having a voice in the legislative process as required by the California State Constitution. Article 2, Section 9 of the California Constitution, provides for the referendum process in California. Citizens have the power to approve or reject statutes or parts of statutes, except for urgency statutes and some other fiscal exceptions. If the legislature had improperly used the process reserved for public health and safety emergencies, the cities of California could have reviewed and challenged the law by referendum pursuant to Article 2, Section 9 of the California Constitution. You have been placed in an unfortunate situation where you are unable to conduct the 2024 general election without breaking either state or federal laws. You cannot comply with newly enacted state laws without breaking federal laws. You cannot comply with federal laws without breaking this newly enacted state law. Additional reasons to cease and desist. Application of the Help America Vote Act. The Help America Vote Act of 2002, herein referred to as HAVA, requires accurate voter rolls to be maintained by the local jurisdiction. California counties have hundreds and even thousands of ineligible voters on their rolls. This violates HAVA's requirement for accuracy and compliance in elections, including the voter rolls. You know this because many citizens have taken it upon themselves to audit the voter rolls because our government-
You need to wrap up, sir. You're out of time.
And they have found hundreds and thousands of ineligible voters. Some of these citizens have come before officials only to be disparaged and ignored. Many of our elections are decided by less than 100 votes and some by less than 10 votes. Inaccurate voter rolls are an incontestable fact. The Election Integrity Project California reported that they found 1,834,789 more registered voters than eligible citizens in the state voter rolls, including active and inactive voters. HAVA was enacted due to the 2000 Bush-Gore election debacle, which greatly divided voters and destroyed voter trust. Simply articulated, if voter rolls are not accurate and compliant, elections cannot be certified as compliant or accurate, meeting the standards set with HAVA. HAVA was designed to provide a zero-trust model for voting systems, which includes transparency to address trust issues when using electronic voter machines. Although election fraud existed in individual local races, these widespread trust issues did not exist before electronic mechanical machines. In addition, HAVA falls under the Civil Rights Act, therefore. Certifying inaccurate or noncompliant elections violates every citizen's civil rights when elections are not accurate or election laws have been violated. Financial reasons to comply with HAVA. Not only is HAVA a federal law, not only is HAVA a federal law, not only is HAVA a federal law, but because this county has accepted federal money pursuant to HAVA, it is also contract law. This county entered a contract with the federal government when it accepted funds-
Next speaker, next speaker, please.
-under the Help America Vote Act.
Thank you.
Kenneth Calvin Jr., the Board of Supervisors voted to accept these funds, county councils signed off on the contracts, and the ROV clerk recorder agreed to comply with the terms of that contract. If this county follows California law and specifically AB 969, the county cannot meet the contractual requirements of the Help America Vote Act. If the county intends to follow California law, the county will deprive the citizens of the transparency required, resulting in a misappropriation of federal funds. Failing to follow the federally mandated HAVA, the county would have to return the HAVA funds to the federal government. If the county returns the HAVA funds, the county cannot pay for the election equipment that the county is required by California law to use. Gets a little uncomfortable. Each of you swore an oath to the United States Constitution and to the Constitution of the United States of California, to the State of California. Both constitutions guarantee citizens the right to have their vote accurately counted and to elect their representatives. Your oath is not to the government, but to the Constitution and the people you represent. Certifying uncertifiable elections in a federal election can reach the level of treason. Do not assume, just because county election officials have not been held accountable to this point, that they will not be held accountable now and in the future. We pray those involved do not expose themselves or the county to this financial obligation. We respectfully demand that the county comply with both the California and federal constitutions rather than following newly enacted and unconstitutional California laws. First, the process must be transparent and the counts must be verified. Second, only eligible voters should be allowed to vote. To meet these requirements, the county should have one day hand-counted elections requiring ID to vote and mail-in ballots, limited to legitimate absentee voters. Your thoughtful consideration of the matters contained in the letter and the requirements of your oath to the United States and California constitutions are greatly appreciated. The favor of a reply is also requested. May the Lord richly bless you all. Come on. We're all in here, One Nation, One Team. Let's do this together.
There are many here that believe in God's power. Today can be a great day, an historical day, for America and the world. It can start right here in Sacramento County. I believe God is granting everyone that is in attendance here today the power to make great changes for the direction of our state and country. There is a great God-given opportunity before the Sacramento Board of Supervisors to take the initiative and make some positive changes in order to save California's free elections. I truly believe that we are on the cusp of losing free elections in California. We are 27 days away from the most important presidential election of all time. I call on the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to step out from their comfort zones. May Sacramento County be an example for other counties and states to follow. We the people do not want to see our supervisors fail. We would like to see each and every one of our supervisors gleaning and knowing that they were the supervisors that changed course and saved our state and country. I ask the Board of Supervisors, can the Board of Supervisors ensure Californians that this election has new safeguards in place? Did the Board of Supervisors implement new protection mechanisms in order to prevent election fraud? Did the Board of Supervisors adopt new security measures to be implemented at every polling place in Sacramento County? Can the Sacramento Board of Supervisors give any assurance at all to Sacramento County residents what has the Board done for the upcoming election? We the people deserve answers. If this assurance is not provided, we the people will have no other choice than to believe the Sacramento Board of Supervisors do not care about this state's elections. The Board of Supervisors has the power today to save free elections in California, or every one of you can choose to do nothing. If we lose free elections, everyone will be out of our jobs, including all government officials. We will be told where we can work and at what wages, if any, we will be paid.
Next speaker, please.
May the Sacramento Board of Supervisors open up and realize today-
Next speaker, please.
...the dire condition of our state and country and the importance in taking precautions right away.
Next speaker, please. Your time is up, sir.
God so help us all.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I want to call your attention to the premise of our unique American history as a constitutional republic, and that is that its citizens elect their own representatives to their civil government. So therefore, to remain free, our citizens, we the people, must have the confidence that our election system is transparent, in the light, free from suspicion of fraud. So I want to bring to you three major fraud concerns. Number one, election day. Article 2 of the U.S. Constitution says that there is a day, not days. It should legally be the first Tuesday in November, according to the U.S. Code. This Board has made it start October 7th. That means there are 29 days to vote. It violates the Constitution. And with universal mail-in ballots and unsecured drop boxes, no chain of custody, and the U.S. Postal Service is not a chain of custody. It is not fraud-proof, and their four-week time opens the door to fraud. The second thing is U.S. citizenship. Both U.S. and California constitutions require it, but our governor says ID is not required. So even a fraction of the 20 million illegals voting in our country, they can definitely change the election results in California. The third thing is centralized vote counting at the ROV by Dominion machines can be hacked, internally programmed to change votes, and be connected to the Internet to also cheat, and this is well-known. Supervisors, please don't say that this fraud cannot and doesn't happen. 60% of those polled in our nation now believe that it can and does happen, and fear that our elections are becoming selections by tyrants only. Again, we have warned this Board of these clear election fraud problems over the past four months, yet you have never taken this up as an agenda item, indicating that a majority of you, at least, do not care about these election fraud concerns. Why?
Next speaker, please.
Jesus, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anyway, Jesus said, "We need to be in the light."
Good morning, Supervisors. I am Sandy, one of We the People. As we approach this very important federal election, many concerns are still expressed by your constituents regarding the existing election process, and rightfully so, as we find the landscape of our communities being changed by the presence of many non-citizens. I will read some of an article entitled "Oregon Mistakenly Registered Nearly 1,260 Possible Non-Citizens to Vote," DMV admits. Oregon officials admitted an error with the state's automatic voter enrollment program was larger than previously thought, registering 1,259 possible non-citizens since 2021. The enrollment error was unearthed last month, with officials admitting to wrongly registering around 300 voters through an Oregon DMV program that registers legal citizens when they obtain a driver's license or state ID. The DMV and Secretary of State's office said a complete review showed 1,259 people who didn't provide proof of U.S. citizenship were added to Oregon's voter rolls, a number four times the previously reported figure. Officials said the error began in 2021, when a state law allowing undocumented immigrants to obtain driver's licenses took effect. The DMV audit found staff may have accidentally selected U.S. passport when presented with a foreign passport, or U.S. birth certificate when given a foreign document, triggering voter enrollment. The DMV said its dropdown menu has now been rearranged, so U.S. passport is no longer the first default option. Staff must also enter the state and county for all U.S. birth certificates and respond to a prompt when passport information is entered. About half of all states have implemented automatic voter registration, according to the National Conference of State Legislatures. Oregon's error was uncovered after an inquiry-
Please wrap up. Your time is up.
...from the Institute. What can we learn from the mistakes of others to help prevent these types of errors-
Thank you.
...happening in our county? Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Davi Rodriguez.
Good day.
Morning.
A few years ago, I applied to the county registrar's office to work one of the elections, and I was given an appointment to do that, and-
I'm sorry, there's a technical difficulty.
Anyway, because I refused to sign what I thought was an unconstitutional declaration. The California Constitution pretty much describes what is supposed to be in this loyalty oath that we're given, and the registrar's office has taken it quite a bit past that. Now, I asked them to change that back then, and because elections coming up, I did a public records request and asked them to give me the package again that showed what the documents were, the prospective employees had to sign, and it came back again the same way. The loyalty oath is commingled with the seatbelt policy and the employee's statement, so you cannot sign one without the other. It kind of belittles taking the oath, you know, affirming the oath at this point, because they're not separate, and they should be. Further in that, they asked me to sign this pledge about the conduct for elections and registration officials, and it's replete with references to the democratic process, and I think this is an undue influence that is unnecessary for the registrar to go off upon. The Democrat Party has chosen to blur the lines, and they call then the Democratic Party, and now we have the registrar kind of mixing those two. I know the difference, but I'm sure that a lot of new voters, especially ones new to the United States, probably may feel influenced by this.
Thank you, Davi.
The other thing is-
Thank you, Davi. You're out of time.
This thing at the very bottom, you might notice that-
Davi, your time is up, Davi.
They don't even know how to spell the name of Sacramento County. It is spelled-
Davi.
County of Sacramento.
We have a, we're on a time crunch today, which is why I'm strictly adhering to the-
I'm sorry, I cannot hear anymore. I have a little, my hearing, I'll have to read the thing later.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I believe that's the last public comment off agenda, so that takes us to our consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
Okay, for your consent matters, items 2 through 47. For item 12, you're adopting an ordinance amending Section 2.78.759 of the Sacramento County Code related to payment of vacation, holiday, and lieu and sick leave balances for employees who accept employment with the Sacramento Area Sewer District. You waive reading on this on September 24th. For item 14, you're adopting an ordinance amending Section 16.86.130 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the initial credit and reimbursement program for the construction of dedication of right-of-way for and advance funding of Metro Air Park public facilities and related costs. You waive reading on this on September 24th, and that concludes my notes.
Okay. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question on item 20. In effect, it asks Ms. Bellis to come to the podium while clerk reads the item.
Item 20 is to authorize the Director of Regional Parks to execute a license agreement with the Sacramento Valley Conservancy associated with use of lands associated at and adjacent to Camp Pollock in the American River Parkway.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Liz.
Good morning.
Just wanted to understand and make clear that with our action on this item today, what does it do or not do relative to the enhancement of response to homeless encampments at or near Camp Pollock, including post-encampment debris cleanup?
It should have no effect whatsoever. We still patrol the entirety of Camp Pollock, not just the area that the county technically owns.
So is this really just about who's responsible for what and not necessarily-
Correct.
Additive enhancement?
Correct. So we have the State Lands Commission who owns the property. They lease the majority of the property to Sacramento Valley Conservancy, and then county also owns a portion of the property adjacent, the parking lot area, and the driveway.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Desmond.
Quick comment on item 24.
Item 24 is the El Camino Avenue at Kent Drive Traffic Signal Project.
So just very quick, want to really thank our DOT for working very closely with San Juan Unified. San Juan Unified is moving the Katherine Johnson Middle School, which is currently right next to Encina High School. They're moving it to a shuttered elementary school a little bit further east, and it's going to have major, I think, traffic implications, but going to be a great thing for the community. And our DOT worked very hard with San Juan Unified to make sure this traffic light is in place on El Camino Avenue before that school opens in January. Just want to pass along my thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a comment to make on item number five, please.
Okay. For item number five, this is to approve a resolution accepting $251,000 donation from the estate of Aaron Judah Pierce.
Comment is simply this: I don't think a quarter of $1 million coming to the county out of the goodness of someone's heart should be a consent matter item, so I just wanted to lift it up and say thank you to Aaron Judah Pierce for thinking of our animal control services, and I hope that that money is put to good use.
Well said.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Villanueva.
Supervisor, just to let you know, I know Mrs. Bedworth is in the audience behind me, but she is currently looking at ways to celebrate that and bring recognition to the family and for that donation. And as far as I know, it's one of the larger ones that we've seen in quite a long time. So thank you, if at all.
Thank you. Any others? All right. Is there any members of the public that have an item that they would like to address the Board on that's on consent?
We do not have any public comments for consent.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move consent.
We have a motion. A second, please vote.
unanimous vote with those members present? With all members present. Sorry about that.
I was going to say, it's that sneaky District 6 again.
Item 48 is the Sacramento County 2023 Crop and Livestock Report Presentation.
So, Chris-
Yeah.
I'm doing some unusual agenda management today. How long do you think your presentation's going to take?
15 minutes.
You got 15?
Okay.
Okay.
You guys got that?
As much as we love this every year, it's one of my favorite parts, but we just have to keep things moving today. Thank you.
Okay. No problem. All righty. So, good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the Board. Chris Flores, Sacramento County Agricultural Commissioner. I'm here today to present the 2023 Sacramento County Crop and Livestock Report. This report is prepared in accordance to Section 2279 and 2272 of the Food and Ag Code, which requires that we submit comprehensive overview of the acreage production and value of our crops here in Sacramento County every year, and then also updates on efforts to manage pests and related exclusion and quarantine actions. So assisting me today with this report is our department deputies, Kevin Martin, David Smith, and Brienne Metzgera. Okay. So I'd like to begin this presentation by highlighting the gross production value of Sacramento County's agricultural industry. It's important to note that this figure does not account for the various costs incurred by producers, such as labor, field preparation, planting, irrigation, pest management, equipment, marketing, distribution, et cetera. In 2023, the gross production value was $584 million. For over 25 years, wine grapes have been Sacramento County's highest-valued crop. This slide presents our top 10 crops based on gross production value. In 2023, the value of wine grapes exceeded $204 million, reflecting an 8% increase driven by higher yields. There are over 37 varieties of wine grapes grown in the county, with notable varieties including Chardonnay, Cabernet Sauvignon, and Pinot Noir. Following wine grapes, pears ranked as the second-highest valued commodity at over $55 million. Market milk came in third, valued at over $46 million. And you can see the other leading top 10 crops here on the slide. So I want to explore some of the overall trends in our ag sector, focusing on a few commodities. Beginning with cattle and calves, 2023 brought improved water availability, enabling more localized sourcing of feed, and significantly reducing the costs of the food for the farmers. This was a welcome relief for livestock producers who had faced soaring prices in recent years. While feed costs declined- While feed costs declined, cattle prices, especially for beef, saw an increase. This rise was influenced by a reduction in cattle herds and strong demand for beef, as many ranchers had downsized their herds in response of drought. Turning to cherries, yields exceeded averages thanks to favorable chill hours during the winter and substantial precipitation in December and January. However, a cooler spring delayed the harvest, aligning it with the harvest from Washington State. This overlap intensified market competition, leading to lower prices. Despite these challenges, cherries achieved an overall increase in total value, driven by an impressive 64% increase in yield. Some of the growers actually had damage to their orchards, the branches broke, and some of the growers decided not to sell their crops due to the low prices, but they still had a significant increase. Regarding the county's highest valued vegetable crop, our processing tomatoes, they witnessed a significant rebound in production in 2023 compared to the previous year. This recovery was facilitated by more favorable weather conditions, which contrasted sharply with the extreme heat that had severely affected yields in 2022. In 2023, conditions normalized, yielding a harvest of nearly 273,000 tons, which was a remarkable 64% increase from the previous year. In 2023, we also experienced some downturns. Many hay and grain prices were lower. In previous years, these commodities had been overinflated due to drought and the challenges of finding quality hay. For instance, in 2023, the average price for alfalfa dropped by nearly 40%. And then lastly, although Sacramento's pear harvests have remained fairly consistent over the years, with yields at just over 19 tons per acre, prices have fluctuated. In 2023, the average price per ton was 6.5% lower than the previous year, resulting in a decline in their overall value. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Kevin Martin, who will share insights about some of our ag programs and how they support the agricultural industry.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Martin, one of the deputies at Department of Agriculture. I oversee the programs on the next few slides. The first of which is our pest detection program, which takes place primarily in urban areas. We deploy tens of thousands of insect traps every year to make sure that no exotic pests go undetected and get to the level where they might be able to infest agricultural areas. Some of these flies, the most important flies are exotic fruit flies, but we also trap for Japanese beetles, and we also trap for something called spongy moth. In 2023, there was a particular uptick in the amount of exotic fruit flies in California, something on the order of tenfold, and unfortunately, we had nine flies in our area which did enact a quarantine. But we work with Department of, California Department of Food and Agriculture at the state level. When a quarantine happens, they get involved and do treat, and we perform intensive trapping. And fortunately, in 2024, we did not find any more exotic fruit flies so far, so. We also trap for two other insects, one called glassy wing sharpshooter and one called the European grapevine moth. We have a very large grape growing industry. The sharpshooter spreads a bacterial disease that can kill grapevines, and European grapevine moth is something that can foul and eat fruit and flowers of the grapes. And we have not found any European grapevine moth in many, many years. Next slide is here. Okay. Our pest exclusion program, we have trappers, I'm sorry, we have inspectors who are up early every morning at inbound shipping locations, making sure that no plants or plant products that are coming from areas that might carry diseases or pests of quarantine significance get into our county. To help with that, we have an ag inspector dog named Colonel and his handler named Michelle, and they are able to sniff out any packages that are unmarked. They also work regionally, so although the 59 pests that we discovered in this county are significant, that number is a lot higher for the surrounding areas that the dog team also assists. We have a phytosanitary certificate program that we operate under the USDA and are certified to issue phytosanitary certificates for export of our agricultural commodities. Some of our biggest export countries are India, China, and we send a lot of pears to Mexico. We have 72 wholesale and production nurseries in Sacramento County. Our inspectors make sure that quality standards are maintained in those nursery programs, so there's no pot bound plants being sold or plants that are carrying excessive pests. Fortunately, we have some fantastic nursery owners in our county who understand the importance of what we do and are extremely cooperative whenever we have anything that needs to be addressed. Our apiary program, we promote bee health by regulating safe habitat practices, such as making sure that water sources are available, that are not people's swimming pools, and we also make sure that vacant hives are properly stored throughout the winter. We help bees and the beekeeping industry by enforcing regulations that minimize pesticide exposure to pollinators. We operate under the State Organic Program to verify organic certification, to investigate complaints, and to take action against violations such as improper labeling or pesticide use. So we and all other counties in California are doing our part to help maintain the integrity of the program, and it's worked very well. This has resulted in a market increase in consumer demand for organic products and consumer trust in organic products. Certified farmers markets reserve a place that's special for small farms to promote their product. Growers may bring produce directly from their farms and are allowed exemptions from some California regulations that may otherwise make sales impractical for them. We protect this opportunity through a system of issuing certified producer certificates, where a grower will list what they intend to grow, and then we make a visit to their farm and confirm they are growing what they say they're growing. And conversely, we investigate practices that might undermine the program, such as the selling of produce that is not of the grower's own production.
All right, thank you. David Smith is our deputy over pesticide use, and he'll update us on that.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, Supervisors.
Good morning.
As Chris said, I'm David Smith. I'm one of the deputy ag commissioners at the department. I supervise the pesticide use enforcement program. And I'd like to point out, the abundance that we saw that Kevin mentioned of agriculture in our county, it just wouldn't be possible without the use of pesticides. It's important, though, to remember that pesticides are one tool in a grower's toolbox to fight pests and disease that could be detrimental to agriculture. But like any tool, they have to be used in a safe manner according to established guidelines in order to avoid negative impacts and maximize their effectiveness. So really, the focus of my division that I supervise and the department's goal overall is to ensure that growers and other pesticide applicators come into compliance with federal, state, and local laws and regulations, and we do that through education, inspections, and investigations. So for example, real quick, I won't go too in depth with this, but in 2023, our staff conducted 356 pesticide-related inspections. That includes inspections of all types of pesticide applicators, could be on a farm, could be structural pesticide, even some of the treatments that Kevin mentioned that were done for invasive species in our county. Our ag inspectors also conducted inspections of those treatments. Also, 53 pesticide-related investigations were conducted with claims of possible pesticide misuse. Inspectors looked into those claims and compared them with existing state laws and regulations to see if there were any compliance issues there. As well, one of the main ways that we educate our applicators in the county is by performing a service of proctoring what's called a private applicator exam. And this is one exam that's required by the state in order for pesticide applicators to receive certain types of pesticides. They have to prove their knowledge, and so county agriculture departments throughout the state are included to proctor those exams for these applicators. Also, we issued over 498, it says 498 there, 498 pesticide use permits to different entities that use pesticides throughout the county, and that's one way that we ensure compliance with state and federal laws regarding pesticide usage. So to wrap it up, through the actions of inspectors, we're protecting public health and safety of both pesticide applicators and the public, and also the environment, while ensuring that growers and other folks have access to crop protection materials that they might need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly, we have Breann Metzgera, who will talk about our Weights and Measures program.
Which is the month of November, by the way.
Good morning, Breann Metzgera, Deputy Sealer of Weights and Measures. Today, I want to highlight how our Weights and Measures program supports our agricultural industry and promotes equity in the marketplace. As shown on our presentation, we inspected 23,369 weighing and measuring devices in 2023. Most of these devices are inspected on an annual frequency. Notable examples include livestock and vehicle scales. Livestock scales are primarily used to weigh cattle, while vehicle scales are used to weigh a variety of commodities such as pears, hay, and grapes. To test livestock and vehicle scales, one of our inspectors maintains a Class B California's driver's license and operates our 56,000 Freightliner semi truck. This truck is equipped with a crane, 24 1,000 pound weights, and a specialized cart to move the weights. The truck and weights are used to ensure the scales are accurate. If a scale passes our inspection, a current year's county seal is affixed to it. Additionally, our department inspects scales used at certified farmers markets, where farmers sell their products directly to consumers, as Kevin mentioned earlier. When our ag inspectors inspect farmers markets for compliance, one of the things they look for is our current year's county seal on the scale. The seal indicates that the scale is accurate and tested within the past year. An accurate device, whether it's a livestock vehicle or certified farmers market scale, is essential for fostering fair trade and commerce between buyers and sellers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chris, did you break your arm signing all those seals?
How did you know?
So that really concludes our presentation today. In closing, I would just like to thank you all for allowing me to present this to you on an annual basis, and I appreciate your support, as always. I want to thank the industry members and ag producers who submitted the data for the report. Without them, obviously, we couldn't provide that. And then also, I want to acknowledge our deputies who manage the programs that they just discussed, and our senior ag inspector Laura McCready, who actually compiles and collates all the statistics for this report. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Chris, great report. I love receiving this information. I know that a lot of this production comes out of District 5, and so that, obviously, near and dear to my heart, and we've been working on getting a farm-to-market roads program implemented so that we can recognize the value of getting all of this product from where it's grown or raised to the people that are going to use it. But I have just one quick question. Under poultry, there's almost a $2 million increase from 2022 to 2023. Does that include roosters available for international export? Just asking for a friend.
That's a very specific question.
I'll venture a guess. The answer is no. I'll take my answer offline. Is that appropriate?
Thank you. I see no others. Do we have public comment?
We do have one public comment. Sandy?
While Sandy's coming down, Chris, I will say, I'll echo what has been said already and what I said earlier, that truly, it's always, it's a lot of fun to get it, but this information is incredibly important, and our constituents really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did drop some off at the Economic Development Office, too, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Sandy here again. Great report. There was a section of the report that was discussing pests and pest traps, and just this is common out of concern of overexposure to pesticides. There were two pests that were specifically associated with wine crops in the report, and the person who was reporting on that said that one of those pests, I think it was the last one that was on the list, hasn't been seen, hasn't been detected, I guess, and that's a good thing. But I'm just wondering, in those cases, I'm assuming that it's the pesticides that are providing for this type of result, and does the protocol include then, when do you stop using a pesticide for a particular pest when it's no longer visible? Just, you know, so you don't overexpose crops and individuals?
Thank you, Sandy. And if you have an opportunity, you happen to have experts in the room today, so I'm sure they could answer those questions. Any others?
No other public comments.
Okay, again, thank you very much. I'm going to take item 52 out of order now, so we'll move to item 52.
Okay, so for item 52, this is the Report on the California Behavioral Health Community-Based Organized Networks of Equitable Care and Treatment Demonstration Project. Authority to Opt In to the Project. Authority to amend and increase eight expenditure agreements to meet project opt-in requirements. Approve a Salary Resolution Amendment, adding 20 FTE positions to the Department of Health Services, and approve an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $7 million.
All right, good morning. I'm Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director for Sacramento County. PowerPoint. Excited about this new initiative, as I've had conversations with a number of you over the years. Sacramento County is probably one of the counties most hit by what's called the IMD Exclusion Institutes for Mental Diseases, where we're not able to receive federal funding for facilities that have more than 16 beds. As a part of a federal initiative, they opened up the possibility for states to apply for and receive a waiver of this exclusion, and California did, is in the process of applying for that waiver. So basically, we'd like to come before you today and get your support to opt into this in order to take advantage of the federal funding that's available for facilities with more than 16 beds. In order to do that, the initiative does have to meet some of the federal requirements in order to be in compliance and get approval from the feds regarding this implementation. So State of California has put together a plan on how they plan on meeting those requirements. Their main objectives in putting together their plan are to further strengthen the continuum of community-based care to meet specific mental health needs of children, individuals who are justice-involved, and individuals experiencing or at risk of homelessness, and ensuring residential and inpatient care is high-quality, time-limited, and used only when clinically appropriate. The waiver is right now on track to hopefully go live January 1st, 2025, and so we're ramping up and trying to get ready to make sure that we take advantage of as many of those federal funds as we possibly can. In order to participate, we have to show that we have increased the array of community-based services that are available. We do anticipate that if we opt in, that we will generate nearly $100 million over the initial five-year period. We're looking at approximately $23 million per year, assuming current volume of inpatient, so it might actually increase over time as the time goes. So to participate, we have to actually commit to providing some community-based services. We have to meet milestones to ensure that our IMDs are being used only when there is a clinical need and that IMDs meet the quality standards, and we have to reinvest our dollars generated. The federal revenue that's generated needs to be reinvested back into community-based services. And then here's a list of services that we're going to get to, I'm going to say get to implement, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on what those specific services are, but we basically will use our new federal revenue in order to invest in these additional community-based services. These are the ultimate goals for BH Connect. These are the ultimate goals for BH Connect. See, they're all the things that we want to be doing anyway: reduce utilization and length of stay in emergency departments, avoid preventable readmission rates, increase availability of crisis stabilization, and community-based services, improve care coordination following an acute episode, and improving the availability of evidence-based programs. So to go briefly into the different programs that we're going to get to implement, first of all, assertive community treatment is a high-intensity program. It's evidence-based. It has very specific requirements. In order to be implementing this to fidelity, we're going to have to be in compliance with those fidelity measures that the state will establish. Basically, we all know our full-service partnership programs here in Sacramento County. This will be like a subset of those full-service partnership programs. They will be embedded within our full-service partnership programs. And there will be both a general version, as well as what they call forensic assertive community treatment, which is specifically designed for those who are justice-involved. Don't see this as a huge impact. We're already doing full-service partnership programs and already are receiving revenue for those programs. So we don't see this as a big new investment. In terms of individual, this one should be, individual supportive placement, individualized supportive placement, is an evidence-based model for supported employment. This is something that we have previously been approved in order to implement within our full-service partnership programs. So again, we don't see a great deal of new investment that we need to do here. And so it's going to be, again, another probably low-hanging fruit in order to be in compliance with the requirements to opt in. Transitional rent, the proposal was that we would also be able to receive funding for, federal funding, Medi-Cal funding, for providing transitional rent. Since this PowerPoint was finalized, the state has proposed an alternative idea around how transitional rent will be handled. They're now considering embedding it within managed care plans instead of behavioral health, in which case we'd be able to utilize it. And we'll be watching that very closely to see where it ultimately lands between now and January 1. Either way, these are, if it is with us, we are already investing in our flexible housing funds that are already being used for purposes such as transitional rent. So again, it's not a huge new investment. This is something that we're already doing as a part of our full-service partnership and core, all of our outpatient programs have access to the flexible housing fund. So the one place where we did not currently have this available is within our substance use prevention and treatment programs. And so this action would give us the authority to implement that, should that be required as a part of implementation. The next one is First Episode Psychosis, the full title, Coordinated Specialty Care for First Episode Psychosis. We're already doing this as a part of a really strong partnership with UC Davis, our SAC E-DAPT program. Again, it's basically focusing on early psychosis. And we're already fully funding that. And so we don't see this as a huge new investment for Sacramento County to opt in. One area where we do need to do a little bit of investment is a new benefit that would be available in behavioral health, our community health workers. Currently, community health workers are available through the managed care plans, but not through behavioral health. And so this would make community health workers benefit within behavioral health. We currently have positions within our mental health programs that do these types of activities. And so we're planning on using our existing budget authority in order to implement that within our mental health programs. The place where we don't have that, though, is in our substance use prevention and treatment programs. So we do request some, I think, a very small amount of additional budget authority, 2.3 million, excuse me, $2.3 million, in order to implement this through our supD programs. And these are the types of activities that community health workers do. So coming before you today, hoping for your support in this action item, to opt into this BH Connect initiative. And then it also provides authority to create 20 new positions that will help us with implementation and compliance with everything that's required in this. One thing I do want to flag is that this particular initiative is being implemented in phases. So this won't be the last time you hear me talk about BH Connect, or maybe you won't hear me, but it will be present in budget increases into the future. As we get that additional federal revenue, we'll continue to augment and implement a very robust program in the community-based services arena. So there'll be more coming on this. We do fully anticipate that this will be, will require no new additional county general fund dollars. This will be a self-funding program. There's also some contracting authority, as I mentioned, to be able to implement the community health worker and transitional rent within our supD programs, which is also included in this board action. And that's my presentation.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Quist, for the presentation. I just have, I guess, one question or a series of questions here, perhaps. And I'm not sure who is best qualified to respond. But the last sentence of the board letter is a little confusing as to the fiscal consequence of what we're being recommended to do today. Says the AAR will add the only revenues and appropriations associated with this request to the DHS and patient care revenue fiscal year 2425 adopted budgets. So if I heard you correctly, Dr. Quist, was it 2.3 million that could have some bearing on our general fund or not?
Not, we do not anticipate any of this is going to have any impact on general fund. This is all going to be self-funding with the revenue, the new federal revenue.
Okay, that's the part that wasn't as clear as I thought it could be in the board letter. And so moving forward, though, there will be constant monitoring to make sure that we don't slip into reliance on general fund.
Yes.
Augmentation. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So to pick up on Supervisor Serna's comments there, to plagiarize the movie Jerry Maguire, you had me at self-funding. It's a very good thing. And I just want to clarify that real quick, that on the second to last page of the board letter, there's a table there that talks about net gain, and it's almost $18 million. So once we take those 20 positions, which are primarily accounting and clerical, that net gain is the money that will be used for the actual provision of services, correct?
Correct. In future years, budgets, as we have to implement all of the different components, we'll be in compliance with everything we have to with the state and need to continue to invest those in future years.
Awesome. And so then my question is, if you go back to the state goals, the number-one bullet listed is reduction in utilization and length of stay for emergency departments. As you know, I've prioritized ambulance patient offload times and bringing those down in Sacramento County. We're making some good strides on that. Come January, we're going to stand up the first, one of the first pilot programs for triage to alternate destination, one of the first counties to do that. Will this program be able to stand up, lift up, or augment facilities and services relative to that program?
Of course, that continues to be one of our priorities as well. And we're constantly looking at how we can continue to support our emergency departments to get, I think, our number of referrals this morning were in the teens, in terms of how many behavioral health Medi-Cal consumers are waiting for an inpatient bed. And I monitor that on a daily basis. That will always be one of our priorities. This particular initiative, the way it will have an impact on that is by going upstream and investing in community-based services. The more we do upstream, the more we have a very robust upstream, the less there will be need for those emergency visits, is what the basic logic and rationale for this is.
Okay, so this isn't necessarily addressing the safe discharge issues or addressing the, you know, triage to alternate destination. It's trying to get them before they ever have the crisis that would cause them to want to utilize the ER in the first place.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Could I add, Supervisor Hume, it's also an additional revenue stream for some of those things, as Dr. Quist pointed out, that we're already investing in. So what it does do is it may free up some of our other behavioral health dollars to invest in some of those alternate destinations, such as an additional crisis-receiving behavioral health, an additional crib and things like that. So there's a lot of initiatives going on, but these new federal dollars do help offset some of our existing service costs.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I have public comments for this item.
Okay, we will file this under no-brainer. And I'll move staff recommendation.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, that will take us back up to item 49.
So for item 49, you're acting as the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation. And I'm going to pull up a screen. One of your members of the corporation, Director Betty Williams, is joining by Zoom.
Good morning, Board of Directors. Colin Bettis, County Dent Officer. There are two action items before you today as the Directors of the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation. The first one is approval of the minutes of the prior meeting, which was held on October 17, 2023. Second one is approval of the fiscal year 2425 recommended budget. And the third item is a receive-and-file of the fiscal year 2324 audited financial report. For the budget, the requested budget includes an increase of $9,000, an 8.7% increase. You may note that the expenses this year were lower than budgeted in Accounting Services Section. This was due to correcting some transactions that should have been classified as expenses of the authority rather than the corporation. I anticipate that this year, the costs will come in closer to the budget. The county has also recently issued an RFP for audit services, and it's anticipated that these costs will increase slightly as well. I have, those are the final comments I have on the budget. With regard to the audited financial information, again, as a receive-and-file, it was determined, in the opinion of the auditors, to be presented fairly and in all material respects. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. If there are no public speakers, I'd like to move all the items associated with this recommendation.
I will, okay, we have a motion as second. I will also say, before we finish the vote, thank you, Ms. Williams, for being here and being patient. We got a little off schedule. Sincerely appreciate you serving, but also being here throughout the morning today. Please vote.
So I'll take a roll call vote on this, please. Supervisor Serna.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Let the record reflect that Supervisor Desmond is not present.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. See you next year.
Next item, please.
So for our next item, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors. Item 50 is the County Service Area Number One, Zone One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charge for the 5232 Fair Oaks Boulevard Parcel Split.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grasic standing in for Don Pimentel, who is scheduled to present. So the proposed project at 5232 Fair Oaks Boulevard is an urban lot split located on Fair Oaks Boulevard, about 1,500 feet northeast of Arden Way. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One for unincorporated Sacramento County. As a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the process, and in response to that request, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owner on August 23. Currently, the project is a single parcel in the safety light-only benefit category, and it is assessed $2.56 annually. The proposed change is only to parcel one, which is the only parcel with public right-of-way frontage, which will now be in the enhanced street and safety light residential category with an annual assessment of $62.50. Parcel two will remain in the safety light-only benefit category with an annual assessment of $2.56. So if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on these items at this time?
We have no public comments at this time.
We'll close the public hearing.
Close the item?
Well, we have to open the ballots first.
There's also one extra step after that.
So I received one ballot from the legal owner, 7ILLC, parcel number 2830231001, site address 5232 Fair Oaks Boulevard, Carmichael, 95608. And this is for the annual service charge, and they are in favor of the increase.
Okay, great. So now I have to read the fill-ins for the resolution. Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hume?
Now I would like to...
A second.
Please vote. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
You didn't clear the earlier one.
Is it not?
You need to clear it, I think.
I am? Hang on, let me just try this one more time.
There you go.
Okay, unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 51, introduce an ordinance amending Sacramento County Code Chapter 4.54 and adding sections 4.54, 4.500, through 4.54.560 relating to intoxicating cannabinoids derived from hemp. Wave reading and continue this to October 22 for adoption.
All right. Good morning, Chair Kennedy and Board of Supervisors.
Chad Rindi, Director of Finance. And we've got a brief presentation for this morning. So to give some background, in 2018, the Farm Bill removed hemp as a controlled substance at the federal level. And in 2021, the state began hemp regulations through the passage of AB 45. Unfortunately, there's still loopholes that allow hemp products to be sold that have THC in them, which here we refer to as intoxicating hemp. Those are sold outside of cannabis dispensaries and in places such as online, smoke shops, gas stations, and convenience stores. This issue was brought to our attention by Supervisor Desmond's office, and since then, we've engaged with community-based organizations and others on this ordinance before you today. So what is intoxicating hemp? Hemp is, naturally contains a certain amount of THC. That THC is being synthetically or chemically extracted and incorporated in products such as you see on the slide today, gummies, candies, and other edible products. So why are local regulations needed to address these loopholes that were left at the federal and state level? The state, in their last legislative session, attempted to close some of these loopholes. However, that didn't make it fully through their legislative process. In the last couple of weeks to the end of September, the Governor's Office, working through the State Department of Public Health, did issue emergency regulations to try and address some of what is before you today. Their regulations was intended to prevent any consumable hemp products being sold with any element of THC in them, and to require that any hemp consumable products need to be purchased by those that are over 21. In looking at the state regulations with County Council, they apply primarily to wholesalers and don't apply to the retail level. So we still feel that coming before you with an ordinance has some benefit, as it allows us to have penalties if we do find retail businesses in the unincorporate area are selling these products with a high concentration of THC. We do have limited local data in the area of where these products are being sold. We do have some observations from our finance staff out in the communities who are doing business license inspections. We also reached out to public health, and they do have some data from the Poison Control Center indicating there are reports of individuals ate over the past four-month period that, reported to them voluntary reports, that they had consumed too much of these products and were having adverse effects. And there is some national data that shows at the national level, the majority of the reports are those that are age 19 or younger. And so that leads us to, what are we asking you to do today? Our ordinance before you would prohibit the sale or manufacture of hemp products with above 0.3% THC. Your first action today, if you take it, would be first reading. This would then get a second reading and then go in effect November 21. We have noticed 400 of our businesses that meet those categories before you of this potential regulation. regulate as, through business licensing, the Business Licensing Division of Finance, it would allow us to suspend licenses, revoke licenses of licensed businesses, and to institute administrative penalties as we move forward. Given the size of our staff, it would primarily be a complaint-based process. As we get a complaint from a community member, a complaint from another department out there in the community providing services, we would then go out and investigate these issues and determine if these products are being sold contrary to the ordinance and take appropriate action. And so that concludes my presentation. We do have representatives from the Sheriff's Office, as well as County Council, depending on what questions you have for me today.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. My question is relative to the penalties and the violations. Is the first violation, would that be the response to a complaint, or is the initial contact one of education to make sure they're aware, and then a follow-up would constitute the first violation?
Yeah. Our business licensing approach is an education first. We would issue a notice of violation that would give them some time to cure the offense. So the first violation would be if we come out for a reinspection, and they have not taken those products off the shelf.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Given that information, I would be interested if the Board, during our deliberations, would be willing to increase the amounts of those violations.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you, Chad, for the presentation. But I also want to thank and abstent supervisor Desmond, who I think rightfully brings this to our attention. And my understanding is that we would be one of the first counties to take this type of action. And having heard from other third parties about just how acutely unhealthy these Delta 8, Delta 9 synthetic hemp products are, it really, really impressed on me just how, you know, insane it is that there is this loophole to begin with that is permitting even gas stations not just to sell it, to sell the products, but sell these products that are already documented to be marketed to very young people. And, you know, one of your slides demonstrates that. So again, kudos to Supervisor Desmond for taking, I think, necessary swift action, working with staff to get this ordinance to us. I agree with Supervisor Hume. I'd be very supportive of making the penalties, quite frankly, as stiff as we can legally make them. And to that point, since there are members of the Sheriff's Department here, I do have a question about whether or not, besides all the good work that I'm sure business licensure will take to implement the ordinance, we are certainly well aware in years past that, you know, the Sheriff's Department engages in sting operations for a whole variety of legal offenses. And I'm just wondering from someone that's up in the chief seats there, if they want to come down and maybe address this. What, if any, partnership will business licensing enjoy with the Sheriff's Department to, you know, if not a sting, then what Chad mentioned in terms of other sister departments that may help in implementing and enforcing the ordinance. But what comes to mind immediately is, you know, someone with a badge, so.
Good morning, Board. I'm Sergeant Matring with the Sheriff's Office. There's no plans set in place at the moment for any kind of sting enforcement for this ordinance. However, we work with, you know, business licensing code enforcement as a supplemental, you know, force for their investigations and inspections. We can chat offline if there's something we want to explore for a more active role from the Sheriff's Office, but nothing's set up at this time.
Thank you. This board member would be very, very interested and supportive of a well-orchestrated plan. Once education occurs, and we give those that were regulating in this instance, time to remedy any, any of the actions that we're trying to eliminate here. But following that, I would be very supportive of understanding better what the Sheriff's Department's intent is to work hand in glove with business licensing to really make the point. And I know that some of these things, they garner a lot of public attention, media attention, and I think this is one of those public safety and, in fact, child welfare issues that deserve to have that kind of level of scrutiny. So I'd be interested in what is produced offline in your discussions, and please keep my office apprised. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Chad, to the best of your knowledge, if, you know, this gets adopted, where does that put us in line with other counties?
So we're, we're a bit of a leader in this area. I think most jurisdictions are hoping for the state to craft regulations for this. It's taken a while for the state to try and work through the legislative process. They weren't successful this last year. I know there's a commitment by at least one legislator to try and bring back regulation to address this. But we are leading in this space, and so certainly our data of the results are probably going to inform others. And so it'll be interesting to see whether other jurisdictions follow us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And you can file that one under only ask questions you know the answer to already. Is there any member of the public at this time?
We do have one person, Faith.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
While the speaker's coming down to the podium, and to your last point, I would suggest that, suspecting that this is going to pass in a moment, that we waste no time in working through CSAC to let them know what our experience has been and how we've responded, and some of the nuance that is part of the ordinance, so that through CSAC, other counties can hopefully follow suit across the state.
Absolutely. We'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I am Faith Delotti with Breakthrough Sacramento. It is my pleasure to address you on this issue. We are a year-round free college preparatory program for under-resourced youth who want to be first in their families to get to college, and we're also pre-professional training program for future diverse educators. One of the things that we do with our high school students is social justice internships. And for three years funded by Sierra Health Foundation, we've been working on substance abuse awareness and policy. And one of the things that we focused on is how easy it is to access. I have, working with Mr. Jim Ketti, our students went out and went to convenience stores, vape shops, and smoke shops, and over two consecutive Saturdays, we were able, don't eat that.
I was kidding.
Don't eat it, okay? And that green one, you, you won't remember yourself for a week. All right.
I'll have three green ones, please.
Stay away from the green ones, all right? The important thing is, is that I took two 17-year-olds from Supervisor Desmond's district, and we went out to 10 sites. And as they went from site to site, they got better with their story until they figured out exactly what to say to get the ability to purchase. Once they figured it out, I pulled them off. No more. We can't have them mastering this. However, what I do want to say is they are able to get it. And what we do know from the California Department of Public Health is that the poisonings for children under the age of five is significant, about 30 to 100,000. And for those over that age but under 18, it's 9 to 100,000. The gummy that's green over there has 500 milligrams of THC, 500, a single block. There's 10,000 milligrams of THC. If a child were to get that, they would stop breathing. And that is, that was sold at a store around the corner from my house. Those look delicious, and I assure you, when I set these in front of children, they don't know the difference. So I'm out of time. It's important. And just do dispose of those.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And Madam Clerk, that is our last speaker, correct?
It is.
Okay, I'm happy to move the item, channeling the spirit of Supervisor Desmond. And I want to thank Faith and others for your advocacy on this really important issue, and especially as Chair of the First Five Commission, to the point that Faith ended with, in terms of the effect on the very youngest of our constituents, those aged zero to five. I am very energetically happy to move the item and see that this does get enforced. However, I know Mr. Hume wants to suggest something, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I will second the motion, and I would ask if the supervisors would like to basically take all of the penalty amounts and just move them forward, and then the third events would be the, the maximum amount set by state law of 10,000. So it'd be 2,500, 5,000, 10,000.
Sure. I accept that as a friendly amendment. I assume County Council has no problem with that?
No problem.
Very good. That's the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item.
Item 53 is the Semiannual Homeless Outcome Report.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, Members of the Board, Emily Howkin, the Director of your Department of Homeless Services and Housing. I'm here today with my colleague Sheri Green from the Department of Health Services to provide you a pretty comprehensive update on the work-
Emily, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you. Faith, do you want your drugs back?
Yeah, let me take those and everything. I have little bags. I bet that was just published somewhere everybody could see.
There you go.
First time for everything.
Thank you. Okay.
Percy.
Thank you. Emily Howkin, the Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. I'm here today with my colleague Sheri Green, who is pinch hitting for Tim Lutz from the Department of Health Services, to provide an update on the work that we've been collaboratively doing to, in the county to address and end homelessness. And there's three specific areas we're going to focus on today, each of which builds off of the others. First, Sheri and I will provide some data on the outcomes of our outreach efforts in the unincorporated county and along the park system. Next, I'm going to share some initial data from some public dashboards that are being published, hopefully as we speak, and that will help us to update and regularly provide you more consistent data and messaging around the efforts of our work. And then finally, I'm going to provide you an updated estimate of the funds that the county has allocated last fiscal year to prevent and end homelessness, as well as our efforts to address the impacts of homelessness. So as a reminder, we're going to talk first about our outreach efforts. This slide simply reminds us all about how we approach outreach in the unincorporated county and along the parkway. This is very general, but we generally deploy our outreach staff, which I should also say, we have Scott Young and Kyle Stefano from Community Health Works, who really are doing the work on the ground for us in great partners. They deploy in three different ways. First, proactively identified camps that we've seen, or county partners who have seen, or you and your staff have called in. We also provide response-driven outreach when the Rangers or a sheriff's officer contacts us and needs some immediate crisis response. And we also provide consistent office hours in some of our more suburban areas of the county where people can self-identify and, and refer themselves in for case-carrying outreach. As a reminder, the most important component of all of our outreach is that case-carrying component. While it does take longer, we have been able to show that the more involved, we say, in a consistent level with our neighbors experiencing homelessness, the better the outcomes are over the long term. Currently, in my department, we have 22 contracted community health workers. Those are employees of Community Health Works, who work under Scott and Kyle. We also have four of our heart team members who work under Sheri, who provide the behavioral health connections and clinical support. 10 of these are specifically dedicated to the parkway and the balance work throughout the unincorporated county. So the high-level summary here, which shows that in the first six months of this year, this calendar year, the county outreach teams enrolled 995 individuals into outreach services, supporting 256 of them in exiting unsheltered homelessness. This includes permanent housing, includes reconnections to family and friends, it also includes mini-shelter connections. Importantly, this is through the provision, as you can see here, of over 25,000 service touches, which averages to about 25 per individual. And this depth of the service touch is really, really instrumental to the work that we do and the commitment to stay with individuals until they find a resolution to their homelessness. A little bit more about the folks that we're serving, some really high-level data on race, gender, and age. I'm going to dive deeper into this in our dashboards. This does mirror what we've seen over time, and this definitely mirrors the demographic shifts that we're seeing in the point-in-time count in other county-wide data. So again, we see a very disproportionate representation of our neighbors of color. We also continue to see more males living on shelter. That's not abnormal. And again, the age ranges, you know, more than 50% of the folks that we're serving are over the age of 45. And later, I'll show you some data that cuts that even deeper into some of our, our more advanced age folks. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sheri, who's going to walk through the connections that our behavioral health partners make, and then I'll continue on with the other parts.
Good morning. Sheri Green, Division Manager, Behavioral Health Services. I oversee both children's mental health services, as well as some of our homeless initiatives. So Heart sits under me, BHPH sits under me, and then we provide technical support to our outpatient programming related to homelessness. And so talking about our highlights, Tim presented last week with some data, but this talks about the, the first six months of county-related data. We, we provided referrals into our services to 757 folks experiencing homelessness, and 80%, a little over 80%, were actually linked. So that means we, we worked with the, the person in their homeless encampment or shelter, and they said, yes, I'm ready. I'm right now. Link me. So we refer them to a provider, and 80% of folks showed up to that first appointment and got an assessment and began services with their provider. That's a really good outcome, and we're really proud of that. 314 outreach and engagement attempts, that's where we attempt to engage with somebody and do a conversation, try to build rapport. They're certainly not ready. A lot of times, the question that we get from folks is, does this come with housing right now? Are you going to put me in an apartment right now? Well, then I don't want to talk to you. Homelessness is a housing crisis, and so we do our best to offer shelter and support into providers that will help them get into their permanent supportive housing, but they want it right then and there. So out of the 314, we, we did get 198 folks saying, yes, let's, let's work together. I'm willing to give you a shot. And then the 170 got screened, and then they were referred into our services. Now, 170 folks screened and 183 of the screened. So sometimes folks get screened, but they're not ready for that referral yet. And so you'll see the number is a little bit higher on referred, because those are folks that might not have been ready in the past but are now.
Let me interrupt you just for a second. On the right-hand side, where it says Greater SAC 34 Shelter 164, Greater SAC 31, what's that mean?
It means encampment areas versus in the shelters.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. And then 80 of the individuals were, actually showed up to their appointments. All right. Oops, I think I went the wrong direction. Okay. So I think it's serendipitous that I get to talk to you about Heart today, because tomorrow is the three-year anniversary of the first person that I hired for Heart. And, and October, we hired her, and then by March, we already had our team hit the ground, and we're working in the encampments. So we're not even three years old yet. And the team is going strong. We have a lot of really dedicated folks, folks who are clinicians, peers, senior peers. You got to meet one of our peers, excuse me, one of our senior peers in August, Amy Kimmons. Folks like her work on the team with real lived experience, who have lived experience, usually with a plethora of, of lived experience. It's a combination of their own mental health conditions, substance use, along with homelessness, criminal history, and so on. So they, they are able to build rapport and break down the walls. Not everybody's ready for a clinician to talk to them, but somebody who have been there, done that, can open doors in different ways. The team goes out to encampments, but there's not always folks wanting to engage, or we go out to what we think is going to be a large encampment, and folks have moved on. It is a nomadic group of folks. Various reasons, they may not be there anymore. So we get creative, and we partner with community-based agencies. This is just a few here in the second bullet point of our partners that have events that they invite us to. And what I love about these four is they heard about us. We didn't cold-call on them. They said, hey, we heard about Heart. We want you to come out. And we have- This is just a few here in the second bullet point of our partners that have events that they invite us to. And what I love about these four is they heard about us. We didn't cold-call on them. They said, hey, we heard about Heart, we want you to come out. And we have continued outreach, excuse me, continued invitations to their events. And then the last bullet with the sub-bullets are like consistent, we're there every week locations. Those are still outdoors. Caesar Chavez Park is actually more the three-block radius around Caesar Chavez Park. We're there every Wednesday. So there are a lot of folks living there. The hope is that they go, well, you know, I keep seeing this Michael guy, he's here every Wednesday. You know what? I'm going to see him Wednesday. And so we're hoping that that consistency helps make a difference with keeping people through their stages of change and readiness for services.
Excuse me. Superintendent Serna.
Thank you. I don't mean to interrupt, but I wanted to make sure I understand that as new services become available, and I'm thinking specifically of a particular hospice service that may come online at some point soon, under the banner of Joshua's House that you may be familiar with, I know Emily is. Is that something that Heart is looking at now, at least working with the proponents of that project and ultimately that service? And if not, I would certainly encourage you to explore that because I think in addition to all the great partnerships that you have currently, including those listed in the middle of the slide here, I think that would be an important one. So I'm not sure who wants to respond to that.
I don't know that we've had a chance this meeting, so click with Joshua's House. So I think it's a great idea, Supervisor Serna. The referrals into Joshua's House or hospice will come from the hospitals, but certainly folks who are there should be engaged with to the extent they need it, Behavioral Health Services. So we'll be insured, bring in the whole Behavioral Health Team and make sure that they get a cadre of services, not just the hospice services. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, we work very closely with Emily's team and love ideas for partnerships. And these are just a few. These are just examples. We have significantly more partnerships than that. And then we also provide warm handoffs from street to shelter. We now have our new Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Program, which is a variety of transitional housing options. So the team has been very busy to fill the units that are coming online with that. So that's very exciting. It's really opening folks up to being more willing to accept referrals into our system and to agree to see, to continue to see us. And down on the bottom there, you'll see some of our team in the picture. All right. And then what we also do is whenever we can, we distribute survival and hygiene items. Water is very, very popular. It's a door opener. Sometimes they're willing to be polite and let you talk to them if you give them a bottle of water. Anything we can do to break down the barriers and build that rapport and that relationship. It's a pretty relentless engagement because some folks just are just not at that stage yet.
Can I interrupt you on the?
Absolutely.
On the third bullet, it says Front Street Animal Shelters Pause. Is that Front Street or is that our pause?
I thought it was Front Street, but I can double-check if it's ours.
Anybody?
Supervisor, I'm going to guess that it's ours.
Yeah.
And we'll check that slide and make sure we get it updated.
I appreciate that, thank you.
As you know, animals are a significant support for folks living in the streets and being respectful of that relationship is really important. And we do have vets that have volunteered their time to support animal welfare as well.
And I appreciate that and I just wanted to highlight the fact that the county has this program that we should be getting credit because, you know, all of the folks over at our animal control services do a fantastic job. And as much as Front Street's great, you know, this is us.
Appreciate that. Thank you for the feedback. We'll get that fixed.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Behavioral Health Bridge Housing. So this is a two-part grant. We were awarded both parts, round one and round three. We didn't qualify for round two. It was only for tribes. And so we're very proud of ourselves because the second grant was very competitive. We were only, 10 counties were awarded. And this is allowing us to erect various solutions that will help folks with transitional housing slash shelter slash hotel stays. It's all a work in progress. The grant requires a go-live where we are allowed to spend the infrastructure dollars until January. It is a very tight timeline. They gave us basically one year, 12 months from the date of our executed contract with the state to spend all that infrastructure money and then the rest of it will be spent on services and supports to the folks living in those projects. And these are the types of solutions that we're working on right now. We already have 80 beds and we are in the process of moving forward with 167 more beds. It's kind of a phased approach and we're working with Emily's team on those as well. Pause there for any questions. Okay. All right. And then we have our permanent supportive housing. I think this is one of the most important investments that we have as we know homelessness is a housing crisis and so we're actually utilizing our resources to help with that crisis. And I have to say, I work with other people in my position throughout other counties in California and a lot of counties don't use these solutions. I'm really proud of this investment by the board. And we currently have 401 units over 16 properties and varying types of solutions. It could be families for some of them or we have some units with up to three bedrooms. Families with, excuse me, large families with multiple members are some of the most expensive and challenging to house. It's very expensive to house a family of eight and trying to help find a solution that they can sustain on their own is really a challenge that our providers have done an amazing job of making happen. We have provided technical support and training to all of our outpatient contracted providers and they have really picked up that expertise and own that expertise for themselves to help support the clients and get them ready for PSH, get them ready. And it isn't just this built units. We also provide supportive services and rental assistance to folks living in other types of apartments throughout or renting houses if they're large families. Anything that can be a housing solution, we made the door very wide, very open for folks to utilize the money flexibly to solve the homelessness problem for our clients living here that qualify for Mental Health Services. So this is only part of it, but it's a big part. It's a lot to be proud of. And we have 175 more units coming online in the next couple of years. Pausing there for questions. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I just want to acknowledge the hard work of Sheri and her team. They really, they're boots on the ground, much more than me and my team, and they do an amazing job and it's really great to have such a great partner. I just wanted to add, I know all of you know this, but just in case the public is watching, the numbers that Sheri just shared in the permanent supportive housing are only those funded by Behavioral Health. Most of those are within the context of much, much larger projects. So it's actually, you know, hundreds more and potentially thousands more units that Behavioral Health is helping to leverage. So just in case folks are looking at those numbers and scratching their heads a little bit. So I want to move on now to other ways that we are happy and excited to use data. The data that we just shared was really a concentrated point of time, a six-month of effort over the first six months of this year. And it's a great snapshot, but it really, what we're looking to do is use data in a more impactful way so we can continually update it and continually share it so we can both better tell the story of the folks that we're serving, but also look at the impacts of the programs that we're overseeing and make modifications and adjustments when needed. So while Sacramento Steps Forward does have the responsibility in our community to create system-level dashboards and reports, we feel it's really important at the county level that we publicly share some critical data on programs that we administer. So this is intended to be complementary to work that Sacramento Steps Forward is undertaking, not duplicative of. To that end, today, possibly even right now, we are publishing a series of data dashboards on outreach, sheltering, and rehousing efforts. This here is just a screenshot of the landing page that you will see when you first access the homepage, as well as some introductory text to orient users to what this is and how it should be used. You can see at the bottom that there's three basic categories of data that we'll be sharing. Outreach and shelter will go live today. The rehousing dashboards are forthcoming and will be made live at a later date. Currently, the data that we'll be sharing in these dashboards is at an aggregate level, again, not that system level. As we get more months of data under our belt and we address any bugs inherent in any kind of rollout like this, we may look to further divide it. So today, when you click on shelter, for example, you'll see one big aggregate data set about all shelters. In a future day, we may want to, say, present family shelters differently than single shelters or congregate versus non-congregate. So we're thinking through sort of later versions of this to get a little more granular for the public's viewing.
Excuse me, Emily. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. And forgive me if you're going to get to this point, but under the rehousing part, which I see is coming soon, is there any intent to work with SHRA or even the Apartment Association to list, maybe have some kind of inventory or survey of more comparably affordable apartments, even if they're market rate, but they are in the lower rent, they're lower rent compared to kind of the broader market? Is there going to be some acknowledgement that our goal is still to get people to the point of self-sustainability, not, you know, transitional or permanent supportive and calling it a day?
Right. No, I really appreciate that. So these dashboards, probably not, but I do think that the point you bring up is really important as we look at the system-level work that Sacramento Steps Forward is doing because it can really show the path from living outside an encampment to getting a shelter, to getting engaged in Behavioral Health Services, to then getting housing. And you're right, that a lot of folks are housed in the market or move up into the market and we sort of lose that data because it's no longer controlled by us. So these dashboards won't. These really are only programs that we are administering here. So those are the programs that I contract for. In future iterations, we'd love to add some of the programs run out of our sister departments, like Natoli's Place or something like that. But this is not the place for that, but I think there's lots of opportunities for those kinds of conversations.
And then will the, either landing page or other parts of the site have any kind of hopeful testimonials?
That's a really great point. We do have some of those on our website in general and so we can talk, I can talk with Jana about integrating some of those here because you're right, some people might just come for the data and miss some of those other testimonial pieces. So we'll talk about how to better point people to those. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the landing page. And then before I sort of show you some screenshots, then of course, we'll send you the links. You can actually see it live. Within each of those three categories of service types, data is generally organized in the same way. So once you enter into shelter or outreach or whatever you're interested in, you'll generally see dashboards of two types. First, you'll see data on program performance. This is how many beds are being used or not used. What are the exits to housing in different, you know, treatment beds or hospital or even back to unsheltered homelessness. Again, remember, this is at a program level, not the system. So the challenge of something like this is that our system has many, many partners. So for example, if we have somebody in our outreach program that Cohibo helps to move into a shelter administered by the City of Sacramento, we will not be able to capture the outcomes of that shelter data in this dashboard. That's where you'll start seeing SSF sort of pulling all these things together at the system level. So we'll be able to report out performance at a program or project level, but not necessarily track the trajectory of every single person that touches one of our program components.
Emily, are you getting the participation and support from all of our agency partners inside, outside the county, linked to the county, that you need in order for this data to be as accurate as possible and as useful as possible?
Yeah, so there's two, so I'd say yes. So there's two ways. First of all, we have, the data quality is dependent on our provider's input of it. And by and far, our providers understand the importance of HMI-S, which is the Homeless Management Information System, where all of this data comes from and regularly use it and keep it up to date. So yes, on the provider's side. And then on the community partner's side, you know, we're not looking to have this sort of standalone and be a county thing. We've already started sharing it with other partners. So maybe one of the other cities might adopt the same approach to sharing data and we can share it out. So I think generally, yes, everybody sort of looks at data a little bit differently. Maybe it has their own little nuance, but yeah, we get great participation in these types of efforts. I think everybody understands the importance.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second category you'll see within the data is what we're calling program participant insights. So this is basically who are we serving? Who are these folks? Some basic demographics on them, some of the things I just showed you, age, race, gender, et cetera, but also income and entry, where they entered from, whether they sheltered or unsheltered the time of entry. This helps us not only understand the people that we're serving, but also potentially make pivots within programs as we see demographic shift. So for example, if we have a shelter which all of a sudden is seeing a really large influx of folks of advanced age, maybe that's a time to call in our partners in the Department of Child, Family, Adult Services and overlay some of the IHSS services. So it's going to allow us also to be more responsive to meet the needs of the people we're seeing coming through our programs. And so today, I should have said, today I'm going to focus on the public-facing dashboards. Another component of these dashboards, as you can imagine, it's made up of a lot of data, which is complex and changes quite a bit, is that at the backend, at the staff level, my staff and staff of Behavioral Health and others will have more granular looks so they'll be able to use this not just to provide project oversight, but to work with our providers to make improvements. There's a lot more backend usefulness of these dashboards that we're hoping to really integrate into the work that we do in our department. So I just took a couple of screenshots. If you go in live, there's already been some edits and whatnot. These screenshots were taken a few days ago. But at the front of each dashboard, this one happens to be the outreach one, there's a summary report that just lifts up some key takeaways. So if you're just somebody who doesn't know anything about homelessness, you want to sort of, what's the big picture? These are those data points that we think are critical to get a big-picture understanding. So as a reminder, the data that Sheri and I just shared was six months' worth of data. This is one month. This is the month of July of this year. And so it's not, you're not going to be able to take the months of July through December and add them up together to get a six-month report because people stay in programs longer than a month. So this is intended to be a snapshot, but a snapshot during a one-month period instead of a six-month period. And similarly, impacts at a month level are going to be different than over six months because if people stay engaged for six months, their outcomes are going to improve. One month of enrollment into a program is going to show some different outcomes. But as you can see on this quick snapshot, you can see some similarities even to what Sheri and I just shared. You can see that over half the folks in our outreach services have been experiencing homelessness for over a year. 32% of them are over the age of 55 and 72% are reporting and member, this is self-reporting, a disabling condition at least one. But despite these challenges, we're seeing 52% of those who are engaged with Cohibo and our outreach partners are finding a positive exit out of unsheltered homelessness. I do want to note a typo that has been fixed in the live version. The first one that says average length of time homeless in days, that's actually months. So it's not 42 days, it's 42 months. So that has been fixed in the live version because that one made me scratch my head too.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Emily, what are some of the other potential reasons that could be cited for the reason for homelessness? It says financial.
Oh, I see, okay. So these are things that people say themselves. So the outreach workers ask them. So it could be, I think there's, and Kyle or Scott might know the entire list, but there's a list, a pre-populated list. You can choose addiction, you know, family separation, loss of job. I think it's a pretty, pretty robust list. And in presenting it here, we took some liberties to collapse some of them because, you know, saying, I lost my job and loss of income are kind of the same. So we collapsed them a bit here, but I can get you the entire list. It's very, very exhaustive.
I would like to see it. I mean, it caught my eye only because, I mean, I guess one could argue it's all financial based on the fact if you're addicted, you're spending whatever, you know, income you might get in terms of, you know, assistance or, you know, that's unrestricted on feeding the addiction. I mean, there's all kinds of links back to, yes, it's the fact that you're unable to afford.
Right.
Shelter, right? So, and I get it, self-reporting, so it's maybe difficult to try and make distinctions with, you know, with regard to kind of how people want to self-report. And again, there's probably all kinds of challenges with that around. And again, there's probably all kinds of challenges with that around self-reporting on addiction in particular. People may be feeling uncomfortable doing that. But yeah, I'd just like to know that we've done everything we possibly can to kind of be as accurate in that particular space.
I appreciate that. And some of the, and you'll see this in the next slide, I think, similar questions. Some of the limitations we have is that the choices are dictated sometimes by the federal government, so the choices of answers. This one in particular, I believe I'm correct, is one where you can make multiple choices. So you could say five different things. And so we can do a little more cut into that to say, you know, because you're right, somebody might say financial, we might assess that their financial situation wouldn't be at this place if these other five things hadn't happened. But again, given self-report, it's a little challenging, but we'll definitely share a little bit more about how this is fed and how people's choices can be presented.
Thanks.
Okay, so these are a little difficult. Apologize to read, but I'll try to walk you through. So within each of the program types, then, when you encounter it in real life, a user can scroll through about five or six different graphs, and you can even hover over the bars and get a little more detail. So you can hover over the bars and get the count of people, not just the percentage, for example. This slide, I just pulled two related to Outreach and one of them, because I think you've asked quite a bit about this, and so I wanted to share some initial data from that. The top one shows a visual breakdown about the snap, the point I just brought up about the aging population. And so I had said earlier that, you know, 55% were over the age of 45. This now breaks it down, and you may not be able to read it, but that top bar is folks, I'm sorry, these are people who have been homeless, the length of time homeless. The top bar shows that over 40% of folks have been living unsheltered for over four years. And so that average of 42 months is really skewed by some people being homeless for a very, very long time and some who have been homeless for a very short period of time. The bottom graph is the data that we have currently on folks that we're working with who have refused a shelter assessment. This board's asked this quite a bit, so I want to spend a little bit of time walking through what this is and what it says. This is currently our most accurate way for us to capture this data and report it out to you. So what this does is everybody who's enrolled in our outreach programs, that's through Community Health Works primarily, but also through HART, is offered an assessment for shelter placement or for shelter wait lists usually. Most of the access to shelter is actually through the Coordinated Access System, so we are not actually placing somebody in a bed for the most part. We're saying, "We'd like to assess you for your shelter needs and get you on the list for one or more shelters that might be appropriate for you." And so at the bottom, what this shows is the actual hard number, not percentage, of people who have refused that assessment and then why they have refused that assessment. And this is another place where you can choose multiple answers. So one person could give three different reasons if you wanted. But even if we assumed that all of these were mutually exclusive and everybody only chose one point, if you could read those numbers, which you probably can't, if you added this up, this would be 31 people in the month of July who refused a shelter assessment, again, of the hundreds of people enrolled in Outreach Services. So then what we look at is the reasons why. And the bottom, the bottom of the graph shows the most prevalent reasons. Again, this is a list that there's probably 20 reasons. We just chose to show the top eight or so here. And as you look at the reasons, there are things like the shelter that I'm eligible for is congregate. There's reasons that I, there's no place to store my belongings and I have to leave my stuff. There's things about I have to give up my pets, things that we're all familiar with and things that we're working really hard to address in our shelter program so that those no longer are perceived to be barriers by people who may truly want shelter, but for the fact that they couldn't bring their pet or they couldn't store their stuff.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I want to understand the denominator here as it relates to that bottom chart. That's 31 that refused over the last 30 days.
Yes.
And the denominator is people that are all sheltered or people that have taken shelter over the 30 days?
It's neither of those. It's people who are currently unsheltered and enrolled in our outreach. So they are engaged with Coho, Community Health Works. They are, we call it enrolled in outreach.
Were they enrolled before that 30-day clock started?
So I think that's a clarifying question I would know because some assessments could happen, could have happened, for example, like at the end of June.
Yeah, so that tells a very, I think, somewhat confusing story because what I would like to know is like, in the same time period, how many folks were offered the services and sheltered and how many during the same period refused and why during the same period?
We can certainly work on that. I think the same thing happens at the tail end, like if you enroll in Outreach on July 30th and then you're assessed. But I definitely hear what you're saying. That may be a little, we'll work on seeing if the data is captured that way, that the assessment date is sort of timestamped. I don't know enough of it is, but if it is, that's something that we should be able to do and say the timestamp of the assessment, not necessarily your enrollment date, which I think is what you're asking for.
Yeah, because otherwise, this is saying that somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% are saying no, which we know is not the case, so.
I will say that is consistent with data as we've looked at it over time. You know, what, but then what this doesn't show, which I think maybe is the next, two things it does not show, and I want to be very honest, it does not show this. So the first is that, as I said earlier, for the majority of beds, we don't actually, are not serving as the front door. So what we're offering you is an assessment. At the point in time when a bed becomes available, typically, that's the Coordinated Access System calling up. We don't have data here because that's not our system to say, "Okay, now you got the call today for a bed and you then said no or yes to that." So we're working with Sacramento Steps Forward to ensure when they put out their reports that they're making that second thing. We can only say, "You said, 'Yes, I'm interested in shelter. I'm willing to go through an assessment.'" If today I call you and I say, "I got a bed available," and you then say no, we need to capture that and the reasons why that happens, too. There's sort of a two-step process.
Yeah, I think you either have a very well-worded footnote that explains the qualifiers here in terms of what that denominator is and is not, or you're able to actually do apples to apples.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And the second, the second thing it also does not, and I want to be very honest that this is not due, because this is not, this is only data on people who have consented to provide identifying information and enroll in Outreach, correct? So people who fully refuse any service, we walk up on day one and they say, "I don't want to talk to you." We don't have that data here because they haven't identified. We can't make a record for them in HMIS. And I know that there has been data shared from other organizations around that type of shelter refusal, which is more like, "I walked up to you today and you said, 'I don't want any help'" or said something else like that. However, it's virtually impossible to accurately capture that type of data if we don't know who those people are. So the way that I believe some organizations do is they walk up and say, "There's a census of 20 people at this camp. 10 people said they wouldn't talk to me, so therefore 10 don't want help on that day," which is, which is true. But what we can't do is then say, "I go back the next day and those same 20 people there and five of them say yes." It appears additive when you sort of aggregate it. Your denominator becomes inflated by the number of touches of unknown people. And so we don't have that capability in HMIS, but we do understand that that's sort of another level as well of sort of how we engage with folks. And we're committed to continuing to work with partners on the ground, with Sacramento Steps Forward, and how to capture those other nuanced steps where people either engage or don't engage.
I do think, though, that first, that first circumstance that you just mentioned where you have someone that says, that came on, you know, "We approached a camp of 20 people, 10 said no." That's, as long as that's qualified, that that happened on a single day and you're not using it for the purposes of trying to see how it changed over time specific to individuals, that's still important information. It's information I want to know.
Yeah.
And it's information, and quite frankly, I've been asking for for some time now. And I know that that's, it's very general. I get it. Comes with all kinds of qualifiers. But that, that's nonetheless important to know in addition to everything else that you're presenting here, kind of as a holistic picture of how well are we able to kind of crack that nut of getting to yes?
Yeah, I definitely hear you and you have been. And we can report that and we do have it when we are going to an entire encampment with the, with the expectation of your services encampment. The challenge is that today, just the nature of encampments have changed, that most of our interactions are at the individual level, a referral from the rangers or sheriff or somebody visiting Coho. But we'll definitely work on capturing that.
But even, even at the individual level, I don't understand why a survey taker couldn't on a given day say, "Well, I had this many touches." I mean, of course, you have to rely on the, you know, the fact that the survey taker is, you know, is honoring the integrity of what they're doing and they're being honest about it, "But I had this many touches." And by touch, I mean you approached an attempted engagement. And it'd be good to know, just maybe on a daily basis, you know, how well that is going or not. That's what I'm, that's what I'm interested in.
Okay, we can definitely work on that, for sure.
And I think that, you know, the frustration level is you all share because this data is so complex and it's, and as Supervisor Serna said, you know, you're going to have to have all kinds of qualifiers and all that. I mean, it's just the nature of it, which is why I also asked the question earlier about, our data is only as good as our partners provide it, and so I hope that they continue to do so. That's editorial. I do have a question on, on the shelter refusals. Would this include, because we've seen at some of our, say, tiny homes projects, people exit voluntarily for whatever reason, don't want to live by the rules, whatever it is, does this include those? Because that's technically a refusal.
This is not the next slide, Will. That would be a program exit and we do capture those at the program level. So once you've entered the shelter, even if you leave the next day, that would be captured as a negative program exit.
Okay, good.
And the reasons for those. And I'll show that in the next slide.
Thank you.
So this is in a snapshot of two dashboards that you'll see within, so now I'm moving to Shelter. So, and again, this is aggregate of all shelters, and I just picked two. And the first one is the one I think you're asking about Supervisor Kennedy. And this is a place where I really like to highlight opportunities for us to improve data capture and understanding. This shows the reasons that people exited a shelter program. And you can see the first one, which essentially seems good, is about 32% completed the program. These are very HUD-defined reasons and we don't have the flexibility to change them. So we're working with providers so that we all have a consistent understanding of what that means. Completed the program, in my mind, means that you've gone through the shelter, you've availed yourself of services, and now you've moved on to a better opportunity, housing or in some cases, treatment or whatever that might be. But I can also already see some on here which are, you know, clearly incorrect data. It shouldn't be non-payment of rent as a reason to exit shelter. So these are some places that we're going to work with providers to hone in on how we all share understanding of these kind of bureaucratic categories that don't necessarily reflect the way we actually work with clients. So I think this is the one you're asking for Supervisor Kennedy. And one of the things we can do then is overlay it with the one to the right, which is the program length of stay. And you can see, you know, unfortunately, the longest, the biggest category, over 25% of folks stay in our shelter system as a whole for over 240 days. That's a very long time and we'd love to see that shortened. And I think that question Supervisor Kennedy is asking for, and we can do this at the staff level, we could overlay those things and say, "Of the people exiting within zero to 30 days, how many of those are for good things like getting housing and how many of those are for bad things like breaking rules?" And so we can 100% to that.
Right. Through the, through the chair. So is, are these categories just the ones that we acquire from point in time?
No, these are all contained within the Homeless Management Information System and it's updated daily-ish by all providers, so.
Right, so it's a different HUD prescription?
Yeah, so HMIS, which is the community database that we all have to use and SSF manages on our behalf, has various data components, some of which are universal data components that HUD dictates you have to, that you have to capture demographics, you have to capture this. And so for the most part, the answer choices are, when there are things like word choices on the left, those are typically dictated by HUD. The things on the right with length of stay, we can be more creative because we could cut it at different points.
So, right, and I'm referring to the chart on the left. So those are categories that we will not find worded this way in point in time?
No, and the point in time count wouldn't ask this anyhow because the point in time count is where are you tonight? It wouldn't then say, it wouldn't measure your exit five days later or 10 days later. So no. The things that point in time count that does align with, and HMIS and the point in time count, I think, you know, in terms of demographics and knowing how we're talking about age brackets and race, all of those will match up. You know, I think that the point in time count is much more reliant on self-report, right? I mean, we know who's in the shelter. We know there's 20 people, we know who they are, like we, you know. So it's probably a bit more accurate on an ongoing basis because we have providers actively putting it in.
I have no disagreement. I mean, I've, I've been a big critic of point in time and its, and its, you know, very noticeable limitations, and that's one of them is the fact that they have to group or they feel compelled to group answers the way they do. And in fact, if I'm not mistaken, even the point in time count survey instrument will change every time they do it in some instances.
Yeah, there are certain questions in the point in time count which are mandated by HUD, but then communities, you're right, will add, you know, community-specific questions. I've seen point in time counts in other communities that go into, you know, prevention-type things, like ask people who are no longer homeless. I mean, I've seen lots of creative ways. Obviously, it increases the budget and the complexity of the point in time count. And to your point Supervisor Serna, it's probably not our best measure. So I think using HMIS data and creatively getting better data out of that system, the dashboard I just showed you on shelter refusals is not mandated by HUD. We locally created that because we knew it was important. It's still got work to be done, but those are the types of things we can do.
That was the purpose of my line of questioning is I wanted to make sure that we weren't relying on point in time HUD categorization here.
Right. Yeah, and I think that SSF similarly, like I said, is working on system level, so it will never replace the point in time count, but theoretically, they should be able to sort of say, "On a day, we know how many people in our shelters, how many are enrolled in our outreach programs," and that kind of can be a stand-in for a point in time counted at a day, right? Maybe the good thing about the point in time count is that it doesn't dictate that you're actually engaged in services. So we are only capturing people that are known to us here, right? People who don't engage with us, we have no data on them. Okay, so moving on. So what does this all cost? We've talked quite a bit here and we continue to talk about it, and the board has prioritized homelessness in a lot of your budget actions. Thank you so much. If you recall, about a year ago, my office at the request of the board did an analysis of the county budget. This would have been the 2223 budget. And what funding was allocated at each department level on homeless programs and services. And we've redone this analysis now, so this is the most recently closed fiscal year and we're already working on this fiscal year. And we now estimate that approximately $220 million of last year's budget was allocated to homeless-related activities. For those of you who may not recall, the number in 2223 was about $172 million, so this does represent an increase. But as you can see from the pie chart, only about 25% of that funding is county general fund. The balance of that comes externally, mostly from federal and state resources. And a lot of this, you'll see in the next slide, is actually within county benefit programs. So it's not even, it's, you know, CalFresh, CalWorks, behavioral health programs, which serve folks who are experiencing homelessness, but it's not, it's not by definition a homeless program, but it's a really important investment that the county is making. So here you can see some of the major categories of programs these funds go to. Not surprisingly, the largest buckets are on the far left here, that's within those assistance programs, that's the blue column. Those are your CalWorks, CalFresh, those types of programs. But also, as you can see, sheltering and then behavioral health services. And then you can see down the line how we've sort of tried to categorize these into, into things that, that make sense. I do want to point out that the dark blue line called Community Impact Services, we added that this year to differentiate between things like what the park rangers and forensic lean do as different from things like Community Health Works does. So they're both engaging with people on outside, but in different ways. That's the difference between the dark blue and the teal blue or aqua blue called Outreach and Engagement. And then finally, this slide shows the allocations by department. Again, this shouldn't be too surprising. While my Department of Homeless Services and Housing is comparatively very, very small to Human Assistance and Health Services, it does make sense because this is the entirety of my budget versus a component of these much larger department budgets. I do want to note one thing for those of you who may remember a couple of years ago. At that time, DGS was the second or third largest. That's because they do capital investments and that year we happened to buy WAT. So this year, they look much smaller, they will, or last year, this current year, and they will once again look large because we're about to make another significant investment in WAT. And so departments like DGS, you're going to sort of see, I think, move around as capital projects come forward. That ends my presentation, but I'm happy to take any additional questions. I'm also happy if, if you have any questions for our friends at Coho, I'm sure they'd I'm also happy if, if you have any questions for our friends at Kohiwo, I'm sure they'd be happy to also speak to you.
Thank you very much. I see no supervisor punched in. Is there any public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Well, there you have it.
Thank you so much.
That's what you get when you're very thorough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Item 54 is the Inmate Welfare Fund Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2023-24.
Thank you for your patience in waiting. That's what we call supervisor-imposed wall time.
Thank you for squeezing me in before lunch. That's very much appreciated. Good morning Supervisor Board, my name's Matt Warren. I'm the Chief of Correctional Services for the Sheriff's Office, here to give you a brief update on the 2023-2024 Inmate Welfare Fund Annual Report. As you know, this is the, I believe, the fourth iteration of this presentation to the board, so it, it should be familiar to you. Penal Code Section 4025 establishes the county's ability to run a commissary and establish and maintain an inmate welfare fund to run programs and services to benefit the inmate population. Again, we're here to do, give you a update of the 2324 fiscal year and a five-year analysis of the inmate welfare fund financial operations. The inmate welfare fund is managed by a committee. A committee is chaired by Sergeant Canio from Correctional Services. And the voting members of the committee are the assistant commanders of each, the main jail, the Rio Casumnas Correctional Center and the Work Release Facility, as well as Tiana Hammack from Health Services. So this is a brief overview of the annual timeline. Our budget process runs approximately from March 15th through July 1st. You can see the different stages of application and approval, and there is an option for mid-year additions that are done on an ad hoc basis. So you can see that in 2324, the fund received income or revenue in the amount of $10.6 million. And it, the slide shows you how those funds came to us. Maybe I can preemptively avoid a question here in the other category. The 178,000 is largely derived from bail bondsmen who conduct advertising in the holding cells at our jail facilities. This slide explains the expenditures, which as you can see, 11.9 million is slightly higher than income. I know that several years ago, and I think part of the reason this is a presentation now as opposed to a receive and file, is that in the early 2020s, with COVID monies available to the general public more readily, we saw revenues through commissary sales go way up. Therefore, the balance of the fund became higher than what you were used to seeing. So that brings us to this presentation. And as you can see, with the loss of those revenues, the fund is now trending back down as we would expect it to. So the change in financial position, year over year, the fund has a balance right now of $14.8 million at the beginning of this fiscal year, which is $1.3 million lower than last year. We do have some things on the political horizon that will affect this, including an FCC change in, in policy that's going to severely limit what we as the sheriff's office are able to recoup from telephone calls, which are main. So that's still being ironed out at the federal level, but I did want to put it on the radar that, that is likely to impact revenues to the inmate welfare fund moving forward. Another significant expense that is paid for from the fund is a number of positions, you know, mostly related to, well, as you can see, I don't want to speak to each line item, but in total, there's 22 personnel who are paid for out of the inmate welfare This slide explains to you some of the bigger ticket items that are, are paid for. You can see there's over half a million dollars in, in inmate education that occurs primarily at the Rio Casumnas Correctional Center and at the main jail. And these are some of the big ticket items that we have that we'd just like to, in the spirit of transparency.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
The, the previous slide, it's the $500,000 inmate education. Is, is that just the portion that comes from this fund? That's not all of the funds that we expend on inmate education, is it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And this is some of our anticipated purchases moving forward to the 2425 budget. We intend to do some lock upgrades at the main jail particularly. We have some locks that inmates have discovered how to defeat. And that's going to be a significant project to bring those locks back up to standard. You can see that we have some security camera replacements, also a Truenarc analyzer, which is a, a gun if we find suspected fentanyl in custody, which I'm sure you're all aware is a huge issue we're facing. It's, it's a device that allows us to safely field test that, that substance. So that's what that is. And beyond that, that is the end of the slideshow. As part of your package, you will see some budgetary spreadsheets. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have related to that.
All right, any questions from the board? Do we have public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, thank you.
Takes us to nominations.
And Mr. Chairperson, I just want to go on record that for your consent matters, item 37, that item was continued. It was noted on the agenda, but I failed to call it out in my notes. It is continued to November the 5th, so I want to go on record for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for item 55, you're continuing to October the 22nd, Casumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council, the First Five Sacramento Commission, and the North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to December 3rd, Assessment Appeals Board, Elk Grove Casumnas Cemetery District, Galt Arno Cemetery District, and Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee and the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to November 5th.
Thank you. And the Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to November 5th.
Thank you. And then we have the Disability Advisory Commission.
Reappoint Testin Knott and nominate yet Nicole Brown.
Okay. Would you like to continue the remainder to November 5th?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Local Child Care Planning and Development Council.
Nominate Frisham Moore and continue the remainder to November 5th.
Public Health Advisory Board.
Nominate Michael Lee Chang and continue the remainder to November 5th.
Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Nominate Sarah Weber and continue the rest to November 5th.
Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board.
Please continue to October 22nd.
Thank you. Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I have a note here to continue this to October the 22nd. Sacramento County Youth Commission.
For District One, please continue to November 5th.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue to October 22nd.
Supervisor Frost.
Continue to December 3.
And Supervisor Hume.
Please continue to October 22nd.
And I have a note to continue District Three to October 22nd. And then South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Nominate Miguel Galván and waive the process.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that concludes your nominations.
County Executive Comments?
Thank you Supervisor. Just as you know, the voting season is upon us and we are less than a month away. And before I start my comments, I just want to make sure that, I just want to extend my appreciation and thanks to the voter registrar and when, her staff and all her partners. I know each of you have also supported that department and the staff in, in your own ways. And hopefully, we can continue to do that as we get closer to November 5th. But recently, they're going to be, are they in the process of mailing out all the ballots to the 880,000 registered voters? Oddly enough, or not oddly enough, but interesting fact is there's about 185 different ballots that are actually mailed out, which means there's 185 different ballots that need to be counted. And using our systems is very helpful for that. What is going out to those 880,000 people are a ballot packet. That ballot packet is included your official ballot. It includes a prepaid return envelope, voting instructions, an "I voted" sticker, and all the ballot drop-off locations. So the ballot drop-off locations are available now, or you can send them back, or you can send them via mail with the stamp, your ballots, or if you would like to vote in person, 10 days before the election, the vote centers will be open. Again, I just want to thank the board and the voter registrar and her team for the great work that they do. You know, they make sure that every voice in Sacramento County is heard and, and counted. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like, before Supervisor Searst, okay, I'd like to direct this to County Council. We have a regular contingent of people who come and criticize our elections process and make a lot of statements that we're breaking the law and so forth. Can County Council look into putting together a one-page response on the legality issues that have been raised and, in my mind, are not accurate, and the claims that are made? Could, could, could we have that so that we have it in our back pocket?
Yes, we can prepare that and provide it to you before the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Searst.
Great, thanks. Soon, we're on to our comments now, so.
Yes.
I just wanted to, especially since our parks directors in the audience, just bring everyone's attention to what's going on this week, which of course is Aftershock at Discovery Park. And this, I believe, is our 10th annual. And it is a four-day festival this weekend, runs Thursday through Sunday. Some of the headliners include Iron Maiden and Motley Crue. So certainly looking forward to seeing some of those acts yet again in, at Discovery Park. And then of course, following weekend, we'll have Golden Sky, which is the annual country western festival that will take place at the same venue. So if you haven't found tickets yet, it's probably going to get very difficult to do so in the next 48 hours or so, but look forward to seeing others who will avail themselves of one of the West Coast, if not the West Coast's largest music festival of its kind, Aftershock.
Great, thank you. Any others? Okay, seeing, hearing none, I do have an adjournment. Bill Camp passed away on September 20, 23rd at the age of 80. Bill was a former longtime leader of the Sacramento Central Labor Council and a solid champion of farmworker rights. Bill dedicated much of his life to defending the United Farm Workers as well as struggling workers and other civil rights and social justice causes. To quote Bill and his former Cuban labor trip team, Bill Camp, over the years, has been a voice for the voiceless. Bill was born and raised on a farm near Anderson, South Carolina, a cotton mill town at the foot of the Smoky Mountains. He joined the civil rights movement in 1962, fighting against racial segregation in colleges. After, after offending the state president, not a surprise, of the White Citizens Council, Bill was put on an assassination list. He moved to the West Coast wisely at the age of 20. Bill's, his wife Catherine and their sons, Bill and Bayless, moved to Sacramento in 1974. When the historic farm labor, when the historic farm labor law passed the following year, Bill went to work with the newly-created Agricultural Labor Relations Board, the state agency that created, that was created to enforce farmworker organizing and bargaining rights. He won workers' respect by safeguarding the security of ballot boxes during union elections. Later, serving as Secretary Treasurer of the Sacramento Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO, from 1999 through 2014, Bill was more than a labor leader. He was a warrior for social justice who understood the fight for workers' rights was closely tied to broader battles for racial and economic equality and civil rights. He was also a mentor to many young organizers. Bill Camp is survived by his wife Catherine, sons Ben and Bayless, five grandchildren, Elizabeth Beck, John Daniel Owen Jacques, and Ezra Julian, and a niece, niece. It is with heavy hearts that we join with the Sacramento Central Labor Council and local community to pause and remember the extraordinary life and legacy of Bill Camp, a man whose dedication to working people and unwavering commitment to justice have left an indelible mark on our community. We will never forget Bill's dedication, his unwavering courage, and his commitment to building a world where all workers can stand tall. His spirit will continue to guide the Sacramento labor movement for years to come. And I, just one personal anecdote, remember one day when I was a supervisor, receiving a call from Bill, and the call went pretty much like, hey bud, come on down here and you need to get on the picket line with us, go and be peaceful. And what followed that was me nearly getting handcuffed and Bill encouraging the deputy to handcuff me. But, you know, I think we all had a relationship with Bill one way or another and what, you know, he, he could always be a strong character, but overall, I think he'll be most remembered for what he did for people who did not have a voice. With that, we will adjourn in the memory of Bill Camp.
We'll close session, correct?
Correct.